Welcome to the Somerville Job Creation and Retention Trust meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Annika Van Eaton and I am a managing trustee of the Job Creation and Retention Trust. And I call this meeting to order at six thirty-four P M. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, Governor Keeley signed into law a bill which extends the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. So the session is being held in a hybrid format. It's being recorded and will be a public record. I will now ask the board members to confirm they are in attendance in alphabetical order. Tom Bet.
Present.
Vicky Coitz.
Present.
Silvana Dinka.
Present.
Right. Uh, Jim Hedgy.
Present.
Jacob Luria. I think it's not here. The person who just joined is not Jacob. Okay. Uh, Counselor Wilford Mbah.
Present.
Rachel Nett Carney.
Present.
All right. Annika Van Eaton, present. Rand Wilson.
Present.
We have a quorum. I will now ask city staff to present a few house rules about using the technology. William, take it away, please.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, so as you know, I'm William Blackmer, the Workforce Development Coordinator and serve as the that liaison to the Job Creation and Retention Trust. When an agenda item is being presented, any presentation materials received ahead of time will be displayed on the screen. And if the chair asks for public comment, uh, please use the raise hand function or raise your hand if you're here in the room. Uh, if you would like to speak, you will be unmuted and given, um, two minutes to speak. Trust members, all votes must be roll call votes, like both a motion and a second. The chair will call on each board member for a yes, no vote in alphabetical order. And just note that any comments you type into the chat box on Zoom will be part of the public record in accordance with the whole thing in meeting law. So I will pass it back to Annika to leave the first item.
Thanks, William. So our first item is approval of the past meeting minutes, which was our meeting on March twenty-fifth that all went out to everybody in advance. Are there any edits or revisions to be made to those meeting minutes?
Meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the March twenty-fifth meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, second one, Tom. Um, so to approve the March twenty-fifth meeting minutes. Tom Bet.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Silvana.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
All right, Jacob. Not, not here. Um, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Rachel Nett Carney.
Yes.
Annika, yes. Rand.
Yes.
Okay. Measure passes. Uh, we are now going to do our usual look at our estimated and received linkage fees. So William, if you could bring those up on the screen and walk us through them, that'd be great.
Sure, let me get that.
Thank you.
Share.
Yeah, also went out in the emails to everybody and anyone else.
People over on my screen temporarily. So, um, since our March meeting, we received two payments. Uh, we received a final payment for the development at five Middlesex in Assembly, uh, Square and which is twelve on this line. And then also from eight oh eight Windsor, uh, in Boyd and Yards. So with those two payments, uh, the current linkage debounds now sits at uh, above two point two million. And there is still an approximate nine hundred thousand dollars that is anticipated from, um, two of the projects that are here in light green, um, on this list. So those are the two, um, projects that, that we know of and beyond that, we don't have any projections. Um, so uh, happy to take any questions on the numbers, um, that we have here.
The city of Somerville is calling.
Calling.
Closure is maybe coming. Uh, William, just because the view on the street is a little tricky.
Yes.
Could you give a voiceover to then how much money we have in hand that is uncommitted?
Yeah, so uncommitted currently is, um, two point two seven six five ninety-five. So almost two point three million. And then we have approximately nine hundred thousand that would come from the two, um, remaining payments.
Okay.
So that would get us up to almost three point two if there were no commitments made in the entire.
Anyone have any questions about the funds?
And, and just to clarify, things like the good municipal jobs training program, that four hundred thousand is committed. So that's already spoken for. So this two point two seven six is what we'd have to commit to new investments and new investment ideas.
Okay. Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, please.
Yeah, so a lot of the, where it says funding spent committed, that's actually about half and half right now in terms of what's, um, gone out the door or is in the process of going out the door and then what's been committed but hasn't, uh, launched yet. We have quite a bit that's in that second vote as well.
Yeah. One million.
Okay.
Okay.
That is super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that foundation, we are then going to talk about our survey results regarding federal funding and the impact on workforce development and education systems. This is a, uh, something we had talked about. I, they're in the last meeting or the one before. The last meeting, yeah.
This is quick, but it.
Right, yes, thank you. Um, so to do a voiceover here, thank you so much, William, for sending out this survey in such a timely manner and compiling the results in this summary memo. Um, the survey was completed by thirteen orgs, twelve of which have received or are currently receiving funding from the trust. And most of them were focused on, as we can see here, job coaching and career readiness, small business entrepreneurial support, job training and support services. Um, the majority are receiving federal funding to deliver these services. And ten out of the thirteen expressed that they've been impacted by executive orders and/or federal funding cuts, resulting in a loss of staff, pauses in program delivery and revision of language and curricula related to diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, nearly all of the organizations share that they're concerned and face uncertainty about the impact that proposed policies might have on their FY twenty-six funding um, at the state, federal and corporate donating, donating levels. As we can see here in the summary, funds mentioned, including the Community Development Block Grant Funds, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, American Rescue Plan Act, Youth Works Community Mitigation Fund, Medicaid and the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program were stacked. And so the, the suggestions that word shared here, um, would be good for us to talk about and think about. Their suggestions of best support local workforce development and adult services included continuing to make non-federal and non-state funding available for their programming, pass along other funding opportunities and resources, offer multi-year grants, simplify the application and renewal process, and increase flexibility of use of funds to meet current needs and diversify the types of programs funded. So I'm going to pause and open it up. I'd be interested in folks' impressions. What stands out to you? Reflections? If this resonates with anything you're seeing in, in your own vantage point from the, um, yeah, interested in folks' initial thoughts.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, I, um, am not surprised, but it was nice to see the number that validated what we've been sensing, that seventy-seven percent have already been affected by the federal executive orders and funding cuts. And we, and that does not include the budget that is going through Congress right now that has very severe cuts to programs like ours. So it does seem like this is a pretty emergency situation. Um, the other thing that I thought was interesting is that, um, of the funds that they mentioned in the next bullet down, the CBDG funds and the, um, Community Services Block Grant and the American Rescue Plan, those are extremely flexible sources of funding that people are losing. And our programs, our job training programs, our, um, industry-specific training programs all rely on a foundation of services that the organizations are already providing, like wraparound support services, connection to supportive, um, services like housing and food, um, sap and all that. And they were funded by these flexible sources of funding. So I think that that really, uh, loss of that funding severely undermines an important set of support services that our programs relied on, that we need to be aware of. Um, so yeah, it seems like a very dire situation.
Yeah, thanks, Vicky.
And, um, one question, one thing I was, I'm thinking about it, it would be helpful to also like know this, all our partners and how each, you know, like to synthesize the composition of the different area that is in the path here, this is all in aggregate, you know, it would be good to understand like which, sort of, we can know like who's actually really like on the, on the water, you know, and how we can prioritize, you know, our support level.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I can send out, um, a report that has, that shows each organization's response to each question, um, so that you can look in, in more depth because it, it is important to recognize that, you know, we're talking about a wide range of organizations. Some of these are, you know, only operating in Somerville. Some of these have, you know, a larger presence, um, more variety of funding sources. So I can send, um, that chart out, uh, after this meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
Uh, Rachel?
I had, um, sort of two thoughts in, in looking at this and then also in conjunction with where we are in our own finances for the trust. So the first one was, I do think, I can curious of what you all think of, uh, a pathway here where we maybe look at an RFP that is truly open, where we're asking for organizations to propose what they would do with funding from the trust. Um, it's been a different, is it just a very different approach than we've taken in the last few years where we've had a very targeted uh, asks? The other thought I had was looking at, you know, the fact that we do have over two million in the bank. Um, is there a world in which we, and I don't understand how, where our money actually sits most of the time, and I probably should know that. Um, like, are we earning interest on it? Is there a way to be treating that more like an endowment? Given that we also have a zero incoming, like, we, we have a cliff of what we see as, as our available funds.
Um, I think the, the question around if we would want to be more flexible in light of the funding emergency is a good one for the board to discuss. I do not know where the money is. Uh, assuming it's not just, you know, stacks of gold bars under Will's moon's bed or something. But I, that feels like a worthwhile research.
Actually, a pretty safe investment right now.
Yeah. I was like, I thought this through, actually, that was the way to go. Uh, but yeah, I think that would be a good thing for us to find out. And then on the first piece, I'm wondering what board members think about this idea. Of Tom.
No, Tom.
Of Tom and then Vicky.
Uh, thanks, uh, on the, uh, yeah, it'd be interesting to see if this money just sits in the, in the city's general fund and, you know, that would not pick up any interest on it or not. So, um, what would that be, Rachel, a question for Ed Bean?
I'd assume so. I mean, I also wonder if there's, if there are options that we could look at that we maybe didn't explore in the past because it didn't, wasn't as critical to think about a long-term hold of these funds, like, is, I don't know what options are available to a municipally-controlled trust.
Yeah. Yeah, because I don't know with like the, uh, some of the other, uh, boards, you know, like the land trust and some of the others, what they do with money that comes in, if it's in a separate account that they're making interest on or not, you know? It's a good question. I've never thought about it like that before. Um, and then the second thing, I, I think we need to, I, I understand, you know, everybody's getting hit with these, uh, you know, funding cuts and, you know, on my other board that I'm on with the, on the, uh, uh, transportation, it's, you know, utter chaos right now. Trying to fit, we're, we're trying to do our five-year transportation plan that has to be approved, uh, in May. Yeah, I, yeah, I think the end of May. And, you know, not knowing what the feds are doing has been really difficult. But, you know, we have to still stay to our mission here, you know, and the mission is, you know, um, you know, again, you know, the trust is funded from linkage money, um, and that linkage money was supposed, it should be training some of all, you know, people for the future jobs that are here. So I just, I, I would just caution, we, we're careful here about, because I know when people are losing funding, because we already saw this with the, uh, IRA money, right? You know, everyone knew it was a one-year deal. And, and then when, you know, that money's up, everyone's looking to keep their programs going somehow. Uh, but, you know, again, I, I'd be concerned if we went off what our mission is, uh, you know, on the education piece. So just to kind of, and then, you know, we're, we're going to be impacted by, well, we already are, but because we have nothing on the books, right? Uh, coming up, so indirectly, you know, we're affected because there's no building going on. Uh, I mean, the good news on this is, you know, was, was it a year or two ago we were having trouble, right? Trying to get people to, uh, apply for some of our funding. So we're one of the places that, you know, uh, we're, we're not, the trust is not, you know, we're not relying on the feds to give us any money, you know, um, so, uh, uh, but, yeah, Vicky, it was an interesting piece that you said earlier that the ability of some of these nonprofits to actually do this type of work, you know, some of that's already in place, you know, they have their overhead, you know, and they're funding it, you know, they're paying for their overhead probably through a multiple of grants and things like that. If a lot of that money gets dries up, do they have the overhead covered to continue their work, you know? So I, that, I thought that was an interesting comment there, but I just caution everyone to, you know, I, I would feel we still need to stay on our mission, uh, because that's what the trust was based on.
Thanks, Tom. So I am a, I guess, an original tech gal in some ways, but I just decided to pull up our Declaration of Trust that establishes the basic operating procedures. And I think there is space for us to be more open than we've been, right? We've said, like, job training that gets X number of Somerville residents jobs with an increase in wage by like six months after, right? Like, that is a more, that's a very specific mandate. The purpose of our trust is to assist in the creation and maintenance of employment and career opportunities within and near the city of Somerville for the residents of the city of Somerville. Limits use of all trust property to these purposes. Only, or any funds received pursuant to the linkage ordinance can only be used for the purposes set forth in the ordinances. So.
And there's like ten.
Yeah.
Ten things listed, around ten.
The ten things listed include funds to assist in the development and creation of job training, skill development, apprenticeship and adult education and credentialing programs, funds to assist in outreach efforts to identify vulnerable populations facing barriers to employment, funds to, it, it sort of goes on. I think it might be helpful for us to reset these docs.
Yeah.
Um, but so I think we, my thought on this is that I think we could implement the idea of a more flexible RFP that is basically just like the language from our governing documents. And it's like, what do you need that will accomplish the goals of our trust?
Mm-hmm.
And then it's not going to be like, you know, like all, like who knows what. It'll be like within, they'll need to meet the mission of our work. But I think if we're anchoring it to the very specific language of the ordinance and what we all voted on is, is the purpose of the trust, it still creates latitude while making it very clear it's for these pieces around supporting the career prospects of Somervilleans.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Rachel? And then Tom, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I think what's, what stood out to me is in the, in the, since the time I've joined the trust, that we've had very specific, I think, uh, Vicky maybe used these words last time of like an innovation model, right? We've been like pushing for organizations to start new programs with this funding. And I, I kind of feel like we need to then leave space for them to propose to us how they can sustain a longer standing program, right? And so the range of longer standing programs that might exist that our residents can tap into might include some of the same programs we've been funding all along. Um, or maybe it's things that haven't had a opportunity to apply because we've been very targeted in these innovation spaces. But maybe it's like, you know, we do want to see a continuation of, um, that epic program that we ended up not funding before, but we were like, yeah, that actually could be good. It wasn't targeted to the thing we were targeting at that moment. But maybe it is really relevant now and maybe in a looser model would allow us to fund things where we're sustaining staff as opposed to having the, encouraging the hiring of new staff and the launch process of a program.
And Tom, could you raise your hand?
Uh, uh, nope. I, I just lowered it a little while ago. But, you know, I, I'm fine with, you know, as long as we stay within, you know, uh, the trust documents, um, you know, I, I, because I remember earlier this year, I think somebody that lost our, uh, funding was looking for us to fund whatever program they had, but, you know, I, I think we've all felt at the time it was outside what our purview is. So I just want, I just want to be careful because I know everyone's going to be looking for money wherever they can get it, you know, and, uh, and this was a hard sell. And I was, you know, when we first, um, when this, the trust was proposed to the city councilors and it was the Board of Alderman back then, so I'm dating myself on this. Um, but it was a, it was a hard sell to, uh, get the development community, uh, to, you know, buy into this. So I just want to make sure we're, you know, they, they're going to be feeling that they're getting something for the money that they're spending.
Well, I also hope that our, and expect that all of our impact reports are being shared out to the business community where we can point to the hundreds of people who've gained further skills through this investment. And so I feel like we've built five years of, of investments on that front and are going to continue on that. Like, we're governed by our documents.
So what I think, some of the feedback I've been getting is, I think now that things are a lot tighter up there, they're, they're actually looking closer at that. And, you know, hopefully that's a good thing because that means they'll be more involved than they have been in the past uh, with articulating what their thoughts and needs are. But, uh, yeah, I, I have noticed because I've talked to a couple of, uh, different, uh, developers that are trying to, you know, they're trying to fit, you know, think outside the box too now to get, get their buildings leased and, you know, things like that. So it's, it's been an interesting conversation.
Well, we think all welcome thoughts from the, the business community to make sure our investments are aligned with jobs that folks can get in Somerville.
Yeah, I would love to know what they're saying or the.
Welcomes. We'll share their comments.
Just to make it, it grow that this isn't, this is not like some generous act, it was a requirement, you know, this is like a job. It was created, you know, this is, so it's, uh, I think the most people that should get this information, you know, should be, you know, the residents of the city, you know, and the city council. Because that is, you all created this system to help the community that are actually, you know, looking to be able to stay here and try. So it wasn't, we're not doing, it wasn't like, there's nobody gives a dime about to anything. It's not, wasn't the generosity of the business committee that say, oh, oh, wait, now we're here. Okay, this is what, I mean, very few people have given us anything unless we are given mandate then, that is what is required. You know, and we haven't seen any data about somebody that went above and beyond the required, you know, like, uh, presented that is required of them. Yeah, so.
Well, I'll, yes, I'll put you on that someday.
Very.
What do you think?
I've got a hand up, so I want to follow some rules here.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Um, more than a question, I had kind of a clarification. We all know from the last events that everybody will rush to get phones from wherever they can. Um, I don't have exactly the amount now, but the budget that we have, is it for twenty-five, twenty-six? Or what's the timeframe to use that budget? Because, uh, we, I'm, I am so, so sure that we're going to have more interest than we had, uh, previously uh, from our, our organization because they are struggling with phones now and they want to do the, the, the impossible to get, uh, from wherever it comes. But what's the timeframe that we can spend those money? And, um, how careful we have to be because the future.
We need to, we're required to spend the funds within five years of them coming in.
Okay.
So the funds we have don't need specifically for one fiscal year.
So we have two point two seven million dollars to spend over the next five years.
Those are less. I thought it was only for two years, one to two years. Five years, it looks like.
Yeah.
Need is going to be a, a, a big need, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and no, uh, projected money coming in. So that's
Right.
a concern we've been talking about. Yeah.
Thank you. So I think that's going to be something that we as a board are going to need to think about because we've talked before of like, oh, we should hold for times of need when they come.
Mm-hmm.
And now the landscape has shifted. And at the same time, we know we're going to have less money coming in over the next five years. So I think this is a dynamic that we'll all need to keep checking about.
Yeah.
Uh, Vicky, thank you.
Uh, so I love Rachel's idea and Annika's idea, uh, in terms of having, uh, a more open RFP, obviously, under the parameters of employment and career opportunities, which is in, you know, kind of the, the leading, leading line of our bylaws. Um, and I would actually maybe even want to go through that list of bullets that you started to go through and make sure that whatever we would put into an open RFP, it would focus on employment and career opportunities. So I don't think I would, uh, like, you know, there was just outreach to people, like, we shouldn't fund an RFP just to outreach to people. Like, it does need to, as Tom said, it needs to have that tieback to employment and career opportunities, which is our mission.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing I would say is if we do switch to a more open RFP process, I would really beef up the expectations that the applicant justify why they need the funds and what they're going to use them for and what their projected outcomes are going to be. Uh, because as Silvana said and, and Tom, a lot of people are going to want this money and we are going to need some really. A lot of people are gonna want this money and we are gonna need some really, um, solid information to know whether, um. Any of these are actually good investments. So I think we're gonna really beef up that section to make sure people really justify why they need the funds and, and what. They'll use it for and the outcomes that they're expecting.
Can I build off of that and then we can go to Silvana? Um, I think, yeah, I think building off of what Vicky just said. Um, this would also probably switch up our. Process of reviewing the applications because we have, we've been keeping that in the subcommittee groups and if we're having a very open RFP. We would want, you know, all of the board members to be reviewing all of the applications and working. You know, as a larger group to kind of come up with those recommendations, uh, especially. If it's contentious around the number of applicants that we get. Um, so just wanna, just wanna flag that that would be. Uh. That would be a little bit different, but I think. A good thing also.
Yeah.
Thanks for that suggestion, Liam. Uh, Silvana, then Vicky.
Oh, I have a di- dilemma now because it seems like, uh, everything is becoming, uh, very hard, like. Uh, for me, it will be more necessary for people to be employed than have, um, uh, opportunity, career opportunity. So. That will be hard to decide, um, on those. RFP and wherever they all will offer. Because there are a lot on this, uh, chain and a lot of other things that are necessary and we have been talked even for, um. Uh, people not being, um, able to, um, find a job due to lack of language and lack of childcare and lack of other difficulties. So this puts us in a kind of a, to pair, um, um, I would say a difficult situation because of. The importance of which one will, will go on that level to be, um. Financed or funded.
Sort of thinking about the difference between like. Employment full stop versus like upskilling and achieving, you know, like a different job or a higher paid job. Is that what you were referencing, Silvana? The difference between?
The necessity with the, um, um, possibilities, like. Getting, being employed is a necessity for the families, but even the other ones, um, deserve a chance to go ahead and, and, um, look for more. So this is kind of a trigger for me because, um, everybody have to have a chance, but, um. I don't wanna risk and take the possibility for the other people that are looking so, um, forward to make changes and progress.
Yeah, thanks. Vicky, then Rachel.
Yeah, this, um, I completely hear your point, Silvana, about basically we may end up comparing apples and oranges and grapes. In such an open process, uh, but there are ways of dealing with that. And I've reviewed a million RFPs. And been involved in several processes. And wh- what you do in that situation is your criteria is really more focused on the strength of the application. The strength of the organization, how likely does it feel they're going to produce? Whatever outcomes are going to produce. So it's less about looking for our specific focus and more about. Uh, criteria that really focuses on, you know, how strong is this as an application and how confident do we feel that they'll actually be able to? Get the outcomes that they want. So that, that can be done and it can be worked. And I'm just gonna piggyback off of your point about whether this requires all board members to review all applications. I mean. We could get like fifty applications, let's say. It's not feasible for all board members to review fifty applications. And so what I've seen in. Other processes is as long as an application, one, each application has been reviewed by three people. And you have their scores, um, then you can just add up the scores and then the top scoring applications get discussed by the whole group. So. Uh, just adding in some RFP review tricks that I've seen that help with. Potential situations like this where we may have a lot and we may have apples, oranges and grapes.
Thanks for that suggestion, Vicky. Rachel?
I think the, I was also leaning towards the criteria side of this where, so one that I had was responding to Silvana that maybe we wanna think about. Like a weighted criteria that towards programs that have a direct employment link, right? I mean, that's something we've been talking, right? Like, we've been talking about it for a while, right? So if there's a placement, like if you can promise placements. Um, whether that's into an apprentice, like paid apprenticeship program or like. Uh, into some sort of paid opportunity from there. I feel like that could be something that would strengthen an application potentially given. Silvana, what Silvana was saying. The other, um. Thought has just fallen out of my head, of course. Um. It'll come back to me.
Uh, the RFP process, is it about?
I know, one, I think I've, I've thought about for a while. I was like, is there a sphere where we interview? Um, and, cause I do think there's a layer here of. Like track record that we're looking for that might be different than we normally are looking for. Again, like in that innovation model, it was like. Can you produce something really new and interesting that's really targeted to this idea? And if instead we're saying. We wanna know that you can deliver results that like back, like this is a tried and true program that will absolutely deliver. That may merit a, an actual chat with somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, I appreciate that suggestion. I would also lift up the feedback from the survey of seeking simple application. And reapplication processes and speak from the point of view of someone who works at a nonprofit and is. Not on our development team, but certainly supports many applications. And it is a very long process. With a lot of work and everything is different from every funder. And so I think I would ask the board, especially in this very intense time. To think about if something we're considering is absolutely necessary for us to make the decision. Or if what we're looking for is a track record, do we make that more clear in the application? So, um, and then the other piece that I would, well, actually, Silvana, I'll call on you and then I, I have another.
Yeah, I, I am so sorry. I don't wanna confuse and not to justify. I'm so sorry that I did that question, but. Starting from the name of the organization, the first primary one was like job creation. So I stopped over there more than the career one. That's why I was, um, not insisting, but just trying to clarify and, um. I hope we have to, um, we will have the chance to select and, and to have those criti- criterias and, and discuss it. Um, I don't wanna confuse and I am, um, same as everyone here. We are just trying to give, uh. Wherever we can to the best and. You know, create opportunity, that's all. Do not take it in the wrong way, I mean it.
Oh, no, I think you were highlighting like a really clear tension within the board around. We think about things that are faster turnaround as far as job training versus longer to a credential, like. These are questions that we'll have to think about if we put this RFP out. And so I appreciate you raising that. Um, I feel like coalescing around what a next step would be on this is. One is to find out if we could invest our money in like a high interest savings account or something. So we have a question there. And then two. I think we would wanna think about like the timing of putting this out, but before we get to that point, I think. Having a document for the board to look at that is pulling the language from our governing documents. And so that we can like point out like, okay, of the things that are permissible within our governing documents, these are the things that we think are the biggest priority for this time. Sort of striking the other ones out. Um, and I think talking through, uh, like a draft criteria, having something to respond to. We've already talked about some, some. Things that we might have to weigh around, like, okay, we're asking people to justify or really explain why they need the funds. We're looking, we're thinking track record. We're thinking sort of immediate impacts versus long term. There was the venture of multi-year funding, which. Again, speaking from the vantage point of someone who works for a nonprofit, it is difficult, just as I'm sure it is in the business community to make very long-term plans. When you only know you're gonna have money through like half of the next year. And so I think those are some of the things for us to think about and we could, the chairs can work with William outside. Um, or between meetings to bring a document to the board. Depending on the timing of some of these other pieces, either at the next meeting or the one after maybe. Um, so does that sound like a good set of next steps to folks?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. Thank you again, William, for getting this survey out to the field. Um, I found their responses to be really helpful in thinking about how we're receptive. Through ensuring that we have a workforce and education system when we get through this barrage of substantial federal cuts. So our next topic is a review of our active programs and obligations, the things we're doing currently. So our childcare and childcare career advancement request for proposals. Is out now. Thank you, everybody who put work into that. Thank you, William, for, for shepherding that. Through and the response is due on the twenty-third of this month. Awesome. And then are there any other details to add on that one?
Um, sorry, I was just.
Oh, no, we're, uh, William's sharing something.
Here. Um, this, just to walk us through this agenda item, but no, we had, we had, um. A good amount of participation in our info session that we had, um, on the childcare career advancement RFP and. I'm excited to see how different partners might be able to come together because we had a lot of. A lot of components in there, uh, that we were looking for and, uh. Yeah, we'll, we'll get those responses in about a week and then work with the subcommittee on reviewing that.
So, thanks, William. Um, so.
So William, like most of the folks, again, I'm, I think we are settling back in terms of like. We wanna focus in some other. And so, but it's, it, it, it actually raised, you know, some questions to me like, have we not been, you know, like. Serving some of the resident for this? Okay, okay, because you know, that, you know, when something raises, I feel like this is exactly what. You know, this thing was created. So I, I didn't know it actually went out.
Yeah.
Cause.
Some of our, some of the providers we have funded, the organizations are based in Boston or Cambridge, but we're funding them to serve Summerville residents.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Um, so for the good municipal jobs request for proposals. The RFP is scheduled for release on the twenty-first. There is a hybrid info session on June second and then the RFP will be due on August fifteenth. So that is also something that has been a lot of folks who put a lot of work into. Um, the idea came from community members and I'm excited to see that, that fly out to the world. And yeah, looking forward to that being released. Um, very interested and I hope folks take advantage of the info session, come in and ask questions or. Sort of feel that so that the applications can be really strong. Um, does anyone either from the subcommittee or William have any? Additional things to add to that update?
So we'll have the info session here in this very room. Yeah, and, um, similar to the childcare career advancement RFP, it's again. Um, recognizing there's a lot of groups to come together to, to make. An initiative like this successful. So, um, I'll definitely be. Obviously sharing out the RFP with the board as it gets published, but please. Continue sharing that out and encouraging, uh, groups to, to come to that session. Yeah, I have a list about dating back probably a year or two, uh, like who do we invite to something like that? So I have a good list to work off of, but, um, it never hurts to invite someone twice.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
Yeah, thanks, William, for lifting that up. Like I would, I would double down on board members and. Encouraging you to share this out among your networks as well.
Yeah, I would love to share that.
Um, okay, our next item on our agenda is a vote to approve a no-cost extension for Franklin's Cummings. Franklin Cummings Tech through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. The request letter was shared in the media, oh, wait, Tom, was this your question on the last, last piece or on this one?
Uh, on the last one, just real quick to where you, on that, on the, uh, June second meeting. Is that hybrid too, or is it just, uh, over there?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a hybrid. So it'll be similar to this format.
All right, so you'll send out a link for that?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Cool, thanks, Tom. Sorry, I didn't see you. Um, all right, so on the no-cost extension proposal. The request letter was shared in the meeting materials summarized in a April memo, um. And so I'm wondering if anyone has any questions on this. Uh, William is also gonna bring up the memo.
Yeah, we just have, it's just a.
Audience participation.
A short paragraph on this, um. Yeah, there is.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think this, this is.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, that, uh, no, no, no cost extension. By any objection from the board.
Hey, we have a motion to approve a no-cost extension for Franklin's Coming Tech through December thirty-first. So, Bana has second, thank you. All right. Uh, huh, Tom Bet?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Silvana?
Yes.
Jim? Oh, is Jim gone?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Councilor and Bob?
Yes, yes.
Rachel Nedkerny?
Yes.
Annika, it's me, yes. Graham?
Yes.
Okay, the measure passes. Thanks, everybody. And our last update is about the financial literacy subcommittee. Um, we weren't able to find a time that worked for everybody for this meeting and so. Appreciation to William for your ongoing scandalous assistance. We will, uh, another time.
Yeah, just as a reminder, we have, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had. Um. Set aside for, for this topic, so wanna bring together that subcommittee on drafting. Um, dropping the RFP, um. Assuming we're still going in that direction.
And I am on that and who else then?
Um.
And while you're looking, Rachel?
Yeah.
You have a hand up?
Yeah, I think I'm on this and I'm hoping that if, if I am, if I take myself off, I think it'll make all of you scheduling much easier. Cause my schedule's terrifying.
Well, let's revisit who's on it to make sure we still have a subcommittee if you're off.
We, uh.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We have four currently, so if we remove Rachel, then we will be scheduling with three.
William, Silvana. Okay.
Who was actually on it?
Uh, Councilor and Bob, Silvana and Annika.
Oh, I'm on that one?
Someone else now.
I think it.
Another problem, skip.
I know. When somebody talk about terrifying skin, I'm like, she has no idea what my skin looks like.
We're all juggling a lot of things.
I know.
Okay, um.
I will, I will happily join, but if it makes your scheduling lives easier to make this actually happen and we get the money out, I will. I will, I will happily join, but if it makes your scheduling lives easier to make this actually happen and we get the money out, I will step away.
Well, we can, we can see what another effort ends up with. Okay, so that, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Think our next steps, we're coming from the survey results around uh something to look at for RFP. For us to noodle on some of the things that folks raised, a question about investing our money. And then um William will share back with the Franklin Cummings Tech that we have approved their no-cost extension. And we will endeavor to find a financial literacy subcommittee meeting. Oh, Rand, hello.
I've been very quiet, but um this was a really good discussion. I'm really excited about the two RF, the childcare and municipal, good municipal jobs, RFPs and. Looking forward to getting some good proposals. So just have, I, I've been quiet all meeting, that's all. Not typical for me.
I, I was starting to worry. Um, I am also excited about the RFPs getting out. Thank you for, for marking that. Um. I think there's been a lot of, a lot of thought into these and I'm excited to see, to see who applies and to get that money out. Rachel?
Yes, and just before we adjourn, I wanted to make sure that in case we didn't do the introduction at the beginning, that Dana Whiteside um listening in. Dana is our deputy director of economic development, um and a key member of our team. He started in December and so he's. Been listening in this evening and generally getting deeply up to speed on, on everything we've been doing here in Somerville.
Oh, welcome aboard, Dana.
Wow, welcome.
Welcome, Dana. Do we want to try to schedule the next meeting? How we have so many people here? Oh, do we not have a next meeting scheduled?
So, yeah, so some questions about scheduling the next meeting. Um. I, and I think I included this in one of my last emails. I am trying to get a recurring time. Uh, because I think that just makes things a lot easier for everyone.
Totally.
If we can have a monthly recurring time. Uh, June might be a little tricky. For the recurring time, just because it's also budget season. So it's, there's a lot of dates that probably won't work. Um, but um I do want to maybe propose if we're. Um, looking, I mean, I, I'm happy when we have this on a Thursday. Thursdays are a long day at City Hall. Um, if, if we chose a Thursday that wasn't a council meeting. Um, and maybe did one of those as the recurring, um. Like the default for recurring, so I can, I can look at that for June and then I can also look at that for the months after that.
Well, so Vicky just raised a point that most of us are here. Uh.
Yeah.
So would it be, could we look at June twelfth and June twenty-sixth, like right now, to see what that looks like?
You know, you, I mean, you just mentioned that, like.
But do this, oh, does the council?
I sit on finance, so budgets is in June is like, just tricky, like.
But the after, outside of June, you're here now.
Yeah, yeah.
Did the meeting get canceled or is it not on this particular Thursday?
Uh, no, today?
Yeah.
Let me see.
Every other Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, so.
For the council, but, but for the finance committee, they have like, I don't know, three or four budget nights a week in June. That's just like how.
Oh, but trying to think outside of June.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's fine. Like, if we don't have council meeting, I can easily, you know, try to have a later.
So we're, right now, we're a third, third, third Thursday.
So let's, yes, instead of second or fourth Thursday.
We could do the first or third.
Yeah, first or third. And so what will happen is, because I will not personally not schedule a meeting. As the chair of the second committee, I wouldn't schedule that, but if I sit on other committee like legislative matters, that is scheduled. You know, I, I would try to make sure that at least I'm in here for like an hour or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, yeah, I think, I think Thursday is nice because we also want to accommodate William.
Yeah.
And make sure.
Yeah, I like that, you know, Dr. William work.
I know, I know. Yeah, so, yeah, so any first or third Thursday, you know, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so maybe starting in July.
I would say I don't think June nineteenth. Oh, June, that's Juneteenth, never mind, nobody's here.
Not a work day, so we'll look at something different for June.
But starting in July.
Yeah, starting July, um.
Like a third Thursday.
Yeah, that's right, because I'm gonna be away.
I'm also gonna be away.
So, so I would certainly, third Thursday of every month, that didn't.
So I feel like the first of the month, there's a lot of holidays that fall, like Labor Day.
Yeah.
Um, whatever.
I mean, that's one that feels like a lot already, so.
Yeah, yeah, that'll knock us out if it's the first Thursday in September, but the third Thursday.
The third Thursday.
Yeah, I like the third Thursday.
Okay, so then our, our July meeting would be July seventeen. And then it would be the third Thursdays after that.
Okay, that, anything.
So get on there.
I'll put it there because no, why? Before any, any scheduling at the city council, people usually check up, will I have something already scheduled?
As, as long as that's a hybrid meeting, because I'll be in Virginia then, but uh. Um, but yeah, I, I'll be able to do it, uh, you know, remote.
Hybrid until twenty-twenty-seven. Um.
So what do we want to do? What are we gonna do? Get back to us on June?
Yeah, July seventeen.
Um, June, I'm gonna have to look at another option, so I will probably send it a doodle for June just because. Um, there's, yeah, other.
Yeah, Silvana and Rand, just the July seventeenth and recurring third Thursday work for you all.
And complaining if we have both platforms.
Okay.
See if I join hybrid.
Hybrid.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Not sure, might be there too.
Okay.
Okay, Rand?
I'll do my best.
All right.
I don't, I don't know, I'm driving, so.
Okay, so, so what, and then uh William's gonna send a, a doodle out. So everybody keep an eye out for a scheduler as we, scheduling email as we try and find a time in June to hit form.
I would say June twelfth, probably, but Tom, you have the same scheduling. Layer that I do, which is June twelfth is the rain date of the taste of Somerville.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a great if it's dry on June eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah, June is, June is a really tough.
Okay, well, we'll see.
We'll do our best.
Do our best. Uh, we've got two RFPs that are out there, so the work is continuing. We will figure out the scheduling.
Yeah.
Okay, great, Vicky, to raise that. We've solved one thing. Okay, everyone, mark your third Thursdays. Alrighty, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll try to join.
Motion.
Okay, we gotta. Councilor Ba, second by Vicky. Um, all in favor, Tom?
I, yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Silvana.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Annika, yes, Rand. All right, okay, great, everybody, measure passes. Uh, we are closed here at seven thirty-three. Thanks, everybody. Good meeting, y'all. Take care. Okay.